Time is four thirty P M. The Pelican Rapids City Council meeting of nine July twenty twenty four is called and ordered. I'd ask those in our council chambers, if you have not signed the clipboard by the back door, if you please do so before you leave. And if everyone would please put their phones on fire. Roll call member.
Councilmember Steve Stan. Councilmember Kevin Ballard is absent today. Councilmember Kurt Markraft. Councilmember Steve Foster. And Mayor Brent Frazier.
Want to welcome each and every one of you here in our council chambers, those joining us by Zoom. Remember, our council meetings are shown on Pelican Rapids YouTube channel and also on channel fourteen on Wednesday evenings. I did have a couple announcements for the next three weeks. This week, eleven through thirteen July Pelican Fest, many activities. If you're not quite sure what they are, check the Pelican Press and we will always list them in detail there. And our next city council meeting is three weeks from today. Tuesday, July thirtieth, four thirty P M. At council chambers. Any other announcements? Any other announcements? Hearing none, if at all, please stand and we'll let you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two is citizens comments. Anyone here for citizens comments? Anyone? Seeing none, move on to item number three, addition deletions to the agenda. I have one of each. I have an additional city parks tour request. Jessica Schultz. That's item number seventeen, city park tour request, Jessica Schultz. And we're going to delete item number five. Pelican Rapids Fire Department, move higher, delete item number five. Any other additions or deletions? You want to delete the change request number eleven? For now, say again, change request number eleven. Under number eight. What you wanted to read, just make it off. Okay, okay. That was a change request. Okay, delete change request. I'll move the agenda with the changes. Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all favor, signify by saying aye. Hope the same motion carried. Item number four, approval of consent agenda, which I'll read. Item number four, A approval of council minutes from June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. Four B is approval of cost payable listing. Four C, one is staff report, police chief report, which you get in your packet. Four D is certified unpaid utility bill with property taxes, which there are three. First one is parcel number seven, six, zero, 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 nine, nine, zero, one, six, two, zero, 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 the amount of a hundred and twenty dollars and ninety six cents. Second one is parcel number seven, six, zero, 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 nine, nine, zero, one, zero, seven, zero, zero, amount of a hundred and nineteen dollars and forty six cents. And the third one is parcel number seven, six, zero, 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 nine, nine, zero, five, one, five, zero, zero, one, the amount of two hundred and forty-four dollars and eighty-seven cents. And item number four, E is city office candidate filings open July thirtieth to August thirteenth. Is there a motion to a total? Motion second, discussion. 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 Hearing none, all favor, signify by saying aye. Hope the same motion carried. Okay, let's go down to item number seventeen, city park tour request, and we have Jessica here.
Hello, I as Brownie and Susan is putting on the garden tour this year because the version of the movie committee and was doing that part of with construction. We wanted to focus on showing off our different city parks and having volunteers from the food shelf there. So if someone wanted to make a donation that goes towards the backpack program for the food shelf, that someone would be able to watch the funds that were there, but just have people be able to walk around and see what we have available for parks in Pelican. Pretty simple, Saturday, August third from nine to three.
Council, have any questions?
August third, same day as the murder of your father.
Okay, thank you. Item number six, coalition of greater Minnesota cities update. We have Elizabeth. We fell here. Drove all the way from one city's area, I'm sure.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it and.
Yes. We're getting there.
Thank you. And you should be able to figure out where I'm at. So um, thank you, Mayor. Really appreciate the warm welcome. I always love coming up and visiting Pete and Pelican Rapids and all of you. I want to compliment you on the amazing work you've done downtown. I wasn't able to go and visit those sort of redone river front last year because of my broken foot. So it was just, it was a great job. But onto the presentation. Um, this, I think all of you know this, but for the audience, the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities is an organization that Pelican Rapids has belonged to for quite a while, and it we focus on issues that are really important to cities throughout outside the metropolitan area. Our primary focus is on local government aid and property taxes, environment and energy, economic development, transportation, annexation, and land use, labor, and employment. I mean, today I'm basically going to give you a little backdrop for the session and talk about the three biggest issues we worked on. Um, you know, going into the session, we had really low expectations and short preview of the conclusion. Our expectations were not met. Um, you know, going in, the November forecast suggested we're going to have a lot of money for spending. There was a things that they needed to deal with from last year that might get done, like fixing the tax bill, dealing with the S R O issue. Um, and there was, you know, supposed to be a short list of priorities. It's a traditional year for bonding. It's an even year. You do a bonding bill. Um, there was constitutional amendments potentially at play, and it was also policy. Yeah, bonding years when they're also supposed to be focusing on policy. Um, one other dynamic that went into the session was there was a new Senate Majority Leader. Um, Senator Kerry Dietzick kind of held things together on the previous session for the Democrats. She unfortunately has pretty serious cancer, and so Senator Aaron Murphy stepped into her place as Majority Leader. Um, this I want to point out, so I'm not going to get dive too deep into the budget, but it really does did affect, I think, a lot of what happened this year. What I, in case you can't figure out what this says, this was the February budget forecast. And as you can see, there was what they call a structural imbalance. It may result in a deficit in November. We don't call it a deficit until we actually get there. But as you can see, um, in the out years, it looks like revenue is going to be less than what we'll be spending. And then they brought back the inflation factor that had been absent from state budget for about thirty years. And so between those, there's a, there's a real potential. And right now, again, it's called structural imbalance, but that could turn into a deficit, which, you know, puts some pause on people wanting to spend. Then, uh, next slide. Um, our agenda, pretty simple. Um, EMS, we're going to be talking about that quite a bit. As you probably know, right now, a lot of cities and hospitals in in greater Minnesota are struggling to provide EMS services because reimbursements simply are not paying for the cost. We also are hoping to get a bonding bill. We had a number of different priorities in there, including the P F A, as well as local projects, lead lines, things like that. We also wanted to pump the brakes on some more and new policy and mandates because quite frankly, they threw enough in there in twenty twenty-three. Um, emergency medical services, though, is the first issue we're going to tackle. Um, looking here, this graph just kind of shows you, it's not quite to scale, but the cost of providing EMS continues to go up. The reimbursement's kind of flatlining. And when you have that sort of difference between the two, you all probably know, it becomes very difficult to provide that service. On the next page, you can see some of the numbers. Um, this over here shows you basically the sort of outline for the the ground ambulance service deficits for the most recent um, time period that we have. But basically, there was a net total reported operating deficit of close to a hundred and twenty-two million um, in 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 twenty twenty-two. And that really, that's why we came up with a hundred and twenty million dollars that we were asking for. And this really, you can see, you know, who has the licenses near more than half are the local governments, as well as rural hospitals. And so it really affects a lot of folks in greater Minnesota. Um, basically, we had three solutions. Uh, we were wanted to pass a hundred and twenty million dollar emergency aid appropriation. And then looking down further, that is again, take care of the immediate problem. Try to create in the further session, sustainable funding mechanisms, some reforms to benefit rural services, and then again, look longer term at how do we get higher reimbursement rates? And the other changes that are needed so that we can take care of this problem. Uh, but we faced an uphill battle. Um, we did introduce bills in both the House and Senate. And then again, I'll talk a little bit more about Senator Rasmussen's role. I think it's important to note that we really did push this forward on a bipartisan basis, and I think that was one of the keys to get getting it done. You know, our bills were getting heard, but one of the big challenges that we faced was that D F L leadership, you know, balked at that number quite a bit. So they're again, looking at that structural deficit. And we're concerned about the lack of a budget surplus. We also kind of ran into some headwinds with other proposals. The governor proposed some money for EMS, but he proposed it. And I'll be honest, I don't know why he did it this way, ten million dollars, but it would have gone to just the northeast and the central regions, which again, wouldn't help um, most of the states. Um, we were wondering if the Republican strategy was going to be the bonding bill rider, kind of like what happened last session, but that was another thing in the mix. Um, and final outcome, again, uh, we're we're happy with what happened, but we didn't get everything we wanted. You know, I never like to say, you know, I'm mad because we did get twenty-four million dollars, which, but I like to say that's probably an important down payment. Plus, there's six million dollars for a Sprint medic pilot program that I think is going to benefit at least some uh, nearby counties. But, you know, we worked with the stakeholders to help craft the final bill and the funding distribution formula, which Senator Rasmussen played an important role in. And I think the important piece of that outcome is that a lot of the aid will primarily go to rural EMS, because I think that's really where it's needed. Far from what we needed, but I think the other important thing is that it really did bring the issue to the attention of the media and the legislature, so they have to take it seriously. And it sets sort of the groundwork for the next legislative session and something we will continue to push. Bonding. Yeah, that happened. Not, um, you can see me, my disappointed look on my face, terrified before committee there. It was a traditional bonding year. Um, and it really is probably the place where the minority party, in this case, the the G O P has, can have its most meaningful influence. Um, uh, the state had a debt capacity of about nine hundred and eighty million dollars. Um, and the governor came in with a uh, bonding proposal that was slightly on that, very focused on heavy state-owned assets. I would say the one, probably the best thing in there, at least as far as I was concerned, is that it did put much needs of money towards the P F A, you know, water infrastructure and similar programs. Um, not a lot set aside, though, for local projects. Corporations, this is what we were asking for. We were asking for money for the P F A. We're asking for, you know, childcare money, lead line money, public infrastructure, basically all hard infrastructure grant programs. The other thing that we were really pushing for, and I spent an inordinate amount of time, was raising the cap on several grant programs for wastewater and drinking water infrastructure. But unfortunately, big X, big zero, I don't think you need me to recount that. If you want me to, I could, but, um, it didn't happen. And so you're probably maybe wondering why, um. Uh, you know, when I think that there, I don't think there's any single reason we can point to. Um, I do think, you know, you know, tensions between the parties, you know, were there, but I think that the arrest, um, you know, not far down the road of Senator Mitchell and over in Detroit Lakes really complicated the legislative dynamics. Um, and I guess that's not that surprising. Um, quirks of the legislative calendar, you know, um, we had basically, I mean, that happened over the Easter break. We came, or the one of the breaks, there were three separate breaks, which kind of that whole calendar mix that made it harder to get things done. Um, I will also admit, there were some legislators that, you know, kind of had a bit of a hangover from last year's bonding bill. We did have a large bonding bill, but I'll remind you, that was really the twenty twenty-two bonding bill. Um, you know, and I think the other thing that really, I don't know, got in the way is that during the closing days of session, there were other priorities that took precedence over bonding, things like E R A, gun control, Uber lift, and that got in the way of us getting a bonding bill. So housing and zoning, the other area I spent an inordinate amount of time this year on. Basically, uh, we all know we have a housing problem throughout the state. I think the causes of it, though, are different depending upon where you're at. There was legislation introduced where the goal was to create more housing by increasing density to address climate change issues through land use and address historical race-based zoning practices through land use. Um, the original bill, which I'm going to be honest, was put together without very much input from cities, would have required things like allowing up to eight plexes on lands zoned for a single-family use, allowing accessory dwelling units by rights, and allowing family, multi-family housing to be built in commercially zoned areas. There are also removals of parking minimums and design standards that were in the mix. Um, those bills are dead, burnt for now. I think they were initially supported by D F L and G O P legislators, housing advocates, and developers. Um, we worked with other city groups to voice our opposition. Um, you know, I think a lot of our concerns were is that we were basically faced with legislation that we didn't have a lot of input in the creation. And so the solutions were done in a way that we didn't think would necessarily really help create housing, but would really make some things difficult, particularly in greater Minnesota. We think some of the challenges that the metro face are not the same challenges we face, and that legislation needs to be designed in that way. The House did pass amended version of a family, uh, multifamily proposal to the floor, um, but the bill did die in the Senate. I'll be honest, it was really suburban opposition, um, rather than us. I think we were, we were closer, um, with the authors on getting where we needed to go. It will, as likely will be revisited in twenty twenty-five. It will probably be revisited in some form or another, but, um, hopefully this time and the, you know, the folks involved have voiced their commitment to allowing us sort of at the table earlier, so we can structure, you know, something that really works for all of us, because we all know at the end of the day, we need to get more housing built. A couple other issues, I won't run through all of these, but they're in your packet. Um, worked on the the local sales tax. I know a number of our communities have been looking to impose that. There's a moratorium in place. The House chair and the Senate chair could not come together, and so that dropped out of the final tax bill. Same with changes on T I T and prevailing wage. We were happy to see a bump up in the funding for the small city streets um, roads program. That's something that we helped create a number of years ago and are really trying to get towards permanent funding. Um, greenhouse gas. And what this was is unfortunately, back in twenty twenty-three, sort of legislation was kind of pushed through in the transportation bill uh, regarding highways that I I don't want to get into the details of it. Would it make really some highway projects in greater Minnesota difficult? So my, two of my colleagues spent a lot of time on a task force making that somewhat better this year so that we can get things done. And then finally, there was, I spent a lot of time on this issue as well, a bonding fill bonding bill replacement fund. It was, uh, you know, an idea that may or may not, I mean, it had merit for cities that don't take responsibility, but I'm going to be honest. None of our members are probably the kind that need to do that. It would have required, you know, at least the initial version, that you would have to set up a separate fund with the state that would fully replace anything you're receiving money from um, from the state. We did spend a lot of time with the chairs negotiating it to be in a much better place. We do think, you know, probably by the end, we got to a version that's acceptable and it made more sense. But, you know, our, I, every C G M C member I talked to tends to be pretty responsible in their budget. So um, we did spend time making sure it didn't hamstring you. Looking ahead, um, legislative session, it's an election. Every single House seat is up for reelection. Um, and we've got many members retiring on both sides. So regardless of who takes and girl um, in the House, we're going to see a lot of people who've never held gowns before, chairing committees. And there's at least one Senate special election that we know of, so there is possibility that, um, control of the Senate could flip. Um, I point out, we do do a C G M C candidate packet. You've probably seen that in years past, but we try to reach out for everyone who's running for the legislature, whether they live in greater Minnesota or the metro, to know who we are and what we're doing. And then obviously, there's some big federal elections. Um, legislature convenes on January fourteenth, twenty twenty to twenty-five, two weeks later than before, and I'm very happy about that. Um, upcoming events are summer conference. We would love to see you there. It's in Wake Park in a couple weeks, and our fall conference will be just up the road in Alexandria. And then our Legislative Action Day, always our most popular event is in February. So if you want to come to any of those, let us know. They're going to be great. And I also have to mention, um, we would love to have any and all of your involvements in our committees or whatnot. Our staff members' names are listed on the packet. You can contact them, contact me if you want to get more involved. So, do you have any questions about what I said? I know a lot of information. There's more in the packet. Okay, well, this is honestly some, uh, first time for me doing this at a city council meeting, but every year at our summer conference, um, what we do is we make awards to legislators that are, we call them our legislator of distinction awards. And, um, I I don't want to cast aspersions on others, but when we, we make these awards, we are, we are selective. We want to make sure that the people we're giving these awards to actually really did something, did something for greater Minnesota, did things that we've worked on with and made a difference at the legislature, you know, do more than just show up. And um, we're here to give an award here today to someone who can't make it to our meeting in July. And this is again, very, very happy to have this opportunity to do it in public. Um, and, uh, this, this award is to Senator, uh, Jordan Rasmussen, who's sitting behind me, and I'm just going to say a couple words, and then I'll hand him the plaque. But, um, you know, when you're working at the Capitol, trying to get something really big done, um, and that was for us this year was EMS. You're looking for a couple things in the legislators you're working with. Um, you know, ideally, you're trying to get somebody, you know, trying to get supporters from both parties, because a lot of times, if you can get that rare bipartisan support, getting things done is easier. And it's also really important to get somebody who not, who not only supports the policy that you're trying to push forward, but understands it and, you know, was willing to help shape it. And you'd think that would be a natural, and that that would show up in every situation. Well, that's not always. In fact, it's something, again, you have to seek out. And then the third thing you're really looking for, somebody who's going to work hard and help get things done. And we were very fortunate to partner with Senator Rasmussen on the EMS, because it really did sort of fit all three of those bills. He's somebody, you know, legislature who is willing to work hard with everybody to get things done, you know, put that hard work in there, you know, reaching across the aisle. But also, he really dug into the policies. He had sat on legislative task force and got his arms around the policy. And, you know, we had our ideas in terms of fixing the funding formula, and he kind of took it and it helped to make it better. And I think it really came up with sort of what we, we think is going to be sort of the start of a longer-term solution. And so yeah, we didn't get everything we wanted in the legislature, but we really, I think, made a dent and put us in that direction that we needed to be going. And Senator Rasmussen really played an important role in that. And so that's why when we sit, we sit around as a staff and we talk about like, who do we want to give awards to? Giving an award to Senator Rasmussen was really a no-brainer for us because of the work, because, you know, the sort of the the, the, the hard work and just the, the willingness and understanding to dig into the policy and come up with good solutions was just was an easy award to give. So I want to hand to Senator Rasmussen, be covered in legislator of distinction award. So.
Welcome. Normally, at our, our, our award show, we'd love to give a speech, but I'll let you decide on that.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Congratulations, Senator. And it looks like your next up, uh, agenda, item number seven, is twenty twenty legislative.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. And, um, I won't go through all of what happened over the legislative session. I think Elizabeth covered a lot of it in terms of the policy as relates to, um, cities in greater Minnesota. I, I do want to say, though, on the emergency medical service, one of the first places I heard it was a problem was actually here in this room. It was, you know, this city council and you, um, and people highlighting this as an issue and concerns around response times for your constituents or your residents. And that was one of those early conversations that put this issue on my radar. And especially when we started this legislative session, feedback I'd gotten, uh, from the cities, from public safety officials, EMS professionals, hospitals, county commissioners, that this was really reaching a crisis point, that we didn't have a whole lot of time to do something about it. Um, as, as a, a part of that, um, there's a couple of different components. The, the parts I focused on were the funding pieces, and so I focused on the funding formula, uh, that really took the limited resources we had, as Elizabeth said, the uh, twenty-four million dollars and ensured that, uh, basically, all of it goes to greater Minnesota communities and especially smaller communities that have a tough time funding emergency medical services. So if you look statewide, EMS actually makes money. You go down into Hennepin EMS, they generate cash flow. It's a good business. They make money because they'll have more runs in one evening than some of the services in the district I represent will have an entire year. But there's still that cost of readiness. There's that cost of, uh, you know, basically the ambulance and the professionals waiting around to get that call. And, uh, that's been one of the struggles and challenges. And so as a part of that funding formula, we tried to capture that cost of readiness, uh, for smaller communities, for smaller services, uh, to help, um, support them. It's definitely not a long-term fix. It's one-time funding, and I think this will be an ongoing discussion that cities, counties, communities will be have, townships will be having, um, you know, in the years to come, including in this area. But, uh, one aspect I'm really proud of was, um, Otter Tail County is one of only three counties to be eligible for that six million dollar Sprint medic program. And that was because of a lot of work from, uh, people here in Otter Tail County being ready, uh, to take on that challenge. Senator Judy Seiburger, who was involved in the negotiations, very passionate about setting up a Sprint medic model, which is basically when you have, um, a paramedic in a Sprint S U V car that has the capabilities of providing advanced life support services, who is basically on call all the time, so they can get to a place oftentimes before a volunteer ambulance crew can muster and get out to the site. And so especially for areas that uh, have volunteer services, this should help reduce response times. And we'll be one of, again, only three counties in the state that'll be piloting that uh, to see what the results are going forward. Um, we also had some important, uh, regulatory reforms that, that were addressed, uh, from a, uh, Office of Legislative Order report that found that the current regulatory agency for EMS services was not doing their job, was not sufficiently regulating and ensuring that, uh, high-quality services are being provided across the state. And so there were some changes that were included in the bill that I've worked on and co-authored, uh, that I hope long-term and medium-term will also have positive impacts. I'd say another um, important priority for mine has been, uh, mental health care services. This is something I continue to hear, uh, whether I'm talking with teachers, law enforcement, um, medical professionals, families, uh, is just the increased need for mental health services here in our communities. Um, one of the bills that um, I worked on and got passed this session, working with Otter Tail County, was, uh, a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar pilot program uh, for an engagement services model. And this is, really came out, um, from a constituent who had reached out and had a really tragic personal family experience about an individual who, uh, was experiencing serious mental health issues, but wasn't able to get the help they needed. And so we worked with statewide mental health experts, Otter Tail County Human Services, to develop, uh, this first in the state health program that will allow family members, law enforcement, medical professionals to refer individuals to this program. And then for at least ninety days, there must be engagement services provided to an individual with the goal of trying to get them into voluntary mental health treatment. And the, the measures that we're going to be looking at are seeing if it can reduce interactions with law enforcement. Um, you know, oftentimes, uh, you know, individuals in this circumstance can end up in jail, and that doesn't serve them well or the community well. Uh, law enforcement doesn't want to see that happen either, and hopefully also reduce, uh, the number of civil commitments that we see uh, coming out of the area. So, um, that's another exciting, uh, project that I'm glad will be taking place here in Otter Tail County and our area. Another thing I just wanted, and I want to hear your feedback on this as well, because I know this was a, a priority of mine when we had the, uh, major Mindot project happening here in town, was ensuring that Mindot was really prioritizing the construction on the commercial corridor and trying to get that done as quickly as possible to help minimize disruptions, uh, to the community. And so I'd love to hear your feedback on how that's been going. I know weather has been a factor, an issue with that as well. Uh, but that's been kind of my big focus with Mindot. We're talking about this project of making sure that they get that four downtown section complete as soon as possible to help minimize disruptions. As we look forward into next session, as Elizabeth said, As we look forward into next session, as Elizabeth said, you know, we'll have elections. There'll be a new cast of characters down at the Capitol. I think one thing that will likely happen regardless of the election outcome is there will be a very different fiscal situation than we have been in the last two years. And just as a refresher, last year was a budget year. Uh the state government increased state government spending by thirty-eight percent. Largest increase in state government spending ever. We had that, you know, huge near twenty billion dollar surplus that has largely been spent. And now when we look forward, we have uh, you know, what some are calling a structural imbalance, which is a nice way of saying we're we're looking at a deficit in the future. And then on on top of that, that doesn't take into account that even with those fiscal projections, they're anticipating billions of dollars in less spending because that one-time spending rolls off the books. And so my biggest fear is that's actually a going to be a more challenging fiscal situation uh than most people anticipate because a lot of this one-time money that was going out to cities, counties, law enforcement aid um isn't necessarily going to be there for the next budget cycle. And so I, you know, that'd be something as you guys are thinking about your budgets and different grants or aids that have been available. Uh that'd be one thing to, you know, ask Elizabeth or ask people you're working with, is this, was this one-time money or is this ongoing? As you're thinking about your fiscal uh situation going forward in the next couple of years, because I don't think we'll see that type of spending come out of St. Paul again, unless there's, you know, a a big surprise in terms of a surplus. So I'll stop there. But Mr. Mayor, happy to take any questions, complaints, concerns, feedback on anything the legislature put this year on. Also, have any questions? I did a ride along with them, wanted you to name it, and it was just amazing. They're doing dozens of calls in an hour. And they're within a a pretty small geographic proximity, and so they're getting them to the hospital pretty quick. And so they're actually generating cash and have, you know, the staff they need to cover the area. But when you get out to greater Minnesota, and you know, some communities I represent, they might go uh three days before they have a run. And so it's tough to then make that one reimbursement check covers the cost of that. Any other questions, council, staff? If not, thank you for the fine work and congratulations on the award. Yep, and reach out anytime if there's any other legislative issues that come up or anything I can help with. Thank you. Item number eight is Pelican Rapids Aquatic Center update, and we have Kelly and Scott here this evening talking about the update and also a favor. You want to give us the update at this point?
Yeah, we can do that. Um been a busy last couple of months, basically finishing up the outside of the exterior blockwork. Should wrap up all the siding tomorrow or Thursday for sure, so go ahead with the parking there and that. So then basically the building sealed up, interior blockwork has been finished maybe in the next week. So kind of looking at getting the rest trimmed in, bathroom partition, lockers are going currently. Kind of, just kind of going a lot with that. We'll be moving into the pool decks here this next week. We're setting deck drains, getting everything degraded and seen started this week. So it's kind of getting to be a busy site out there right now. Aqualogic got all the slides and the pool features set, so. Guess any questions? Brian's gonna have a busy time. Can't cool off.
When will it be finished?
We're pushing towards the end of August to try to have everything wrapped up with the building side. We'll see where the life floor takes us and painting with that, but we have to get the decks in before the life floor will go in. So we're scheduling about three weeks on getting the decks put into place.
And then you, then we have to get inspected by the Department of Health too, so then we'll be waiting for them to, you know, give the the basically the the go-ahead saying that, yep, uh Pelican Rapids can get wet. So we'll have to just wait for that. Once we're all done, then we'll bring them in and let's start walking around taking. Is there a one-year warranty on the equipment once it's started? Uh twenty-five days. There's, there, there's a, I'd have to look at the specs on the aqualogic stuff, but basically on the whole pool, everything is a one-year warranty. But there might be additional manufacturer warranties that are required by the specifications. And and each item is different, like the pumps could be three years. It's possible they might be longer than that. Windows in the building are more like twenty-five years, things like that. But specifically, you have a one-year con- uh contractor, construction warranty that anything happens in that year, we can have hammers come back and fix it. So on the eleventh month, you should have me back and we should walk through everything and have Kelly back too. And we'll, we'll mark down what, you know, is, has, you know, been damaged or has failed if one year, and we could fix it before our ears up. Any other questions? I got one thing. It hasn't been out, I'm sorry.
So on that warranty thing, is that something you're going to remind us of or is that something we better write down or what?
Well, I can, I can put it on my calendar, but I believe in the contract that states only if the owner requests it. But but yes, it's something we should make sure we get.
Now that one year will start when?
Uh it starts at um substantial completion, and I'll give you a form, uh substantial completion. It gives a date on it. Um and then it starts from that point, not when the project's totally finished, but at what they call a substantial completion, which is pretty.
And they're leaving a video for you, is that right?
They'll do a training video uh as far as pumping controls and stuff go with. Yeah, absolutely.
And I think Brian, you'll see it at the time when the video is happening, so you'll see it in real time and then you'll have the video.
Yes, that's the way it sounded. They would train us and then they would do a video of it also, so.
If you haven't been out there, I would recommend going out, taking a look at it. It's getting to be real colorful now. The slide is uh the the splash pad with all the water features are up. So all those are different colors and and the, and the little slide, what I'm going to call the little slide that's in the zero entry part of the pool, that's now in place. Uh so it's, last stuff is going on out there right now. It's looking pretty good. Uh I'm guessing a week or two, the fence will be up.
Well, yeah, we'll get the fence up here towards, hopefully this week, or at least the post, so then we can floor the decks. As soon as the deck goes in, we're a little bit faster.
I'd love, love to take a look, but I didn't want to bother.
Yeah, Tuesday, pretty much every other Tuesday or we're going out at eight-thirty in the morning. Yeah, with Brian or just stop in there, find superintendent or something, you can walk your own. Just get the vest on. Any other questions? If not, thank you for the update. Uh and we're looking at change request number twelve. Yes, yes, and if you have any questions on that, we can, we'll certainly. Last, do you have anything to add to that?
No, pretty straightforward, like all the others went through Scott, and he's recommending that we make the payment.
We reviewed it. Looks like everything's just like they say it is. The quality of construction out there is pretty excellent, so. Anything to hinder of why you wouldn't pay that.
I move to uh your request number twelve.
Second motion, second discussion, discussion. Discussions. Here we go, none in favor, second if I'm saying aye. All the same, motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Well, I got one more question just on this change request. Will you guys plan on just coming back to the next council meeting and review it?
I want to get more information before we. You can coordinate a little bit more with the Mason as well.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Item number nine is Pelican Valley utility easement. That was in our packet, but there's a little bit of a change to that.
All right, so this utility easement came up because, so in the original plans, you remember there was a parking lot in the plans on the north side of the pool. Um so the pool, original design was the pool deck drains were going to drain out into that parking area and then um kind of disperse on the parking lot. Um now there's no parking lot there, so the plan is to have a pipe run from the deck drains. And let me get this uh drawing up here. So here's the deck drains coming in from the, this is the north side of the pool on the pool deck. Uh there'll be a pipe going over to this other deck drain, and then there will be a pipe that will go to the catch basin there on Pelican Valley um property. So that's, we sent, we've been working with Apex and uh City Attorney Borzgrin, and she drew up this utility easement that is in your packet. Um the problem was, it just came up today, um so I'll show you in this here. So we sent, we got, we got, actually got the plans for the Pelican Valley parcel there to Apex to help them uh draw up this utility easement. So they went off with the plans read. Well, it turns out the plans, the original plans and what was actually put in is a little bit different. So basically, the thing that will be changed here in this utility easement is this, so this red box is what we need. Actually, this is the property of Pelican Valley, and that's where this pipe. I'll go back to this one. So that's where this pipe is coming in at a diagonal. That's why we have this rectangle here. That's, that's where the pipe is going to go. That's where we'll need our utility easement. So the, really, the only change from what's in your packet to what we actually need is this red box basically got shifted to the south. And it actually, it's actually going to be twenty-five feet wide as well instead of ten. And it's actually only going to be seventy-five feet in length, but then the beginning point will be adjusted as well. So really, the bottom line is that that red box got shifted to the south is what the change is from what's in your packet. So I guess what I'd be looking for is a motion to approve the the utility easement with the adjustments in the dimension and the starting point.
Second, motion, the second, discussion, discussion.
The pool in this drawing here is to the right
Right.
of that vertical line and south, right?
Could be in this area right here. So this is just kind of the plans of the new addition of the Pelican Valley. So Pelican Valley would be up here. This is the pool. We've got the catch basin there kind of on the corner.
It's down below at like riverfront Manor.
Yeah.
Near this, wake up and drop off.
Yeah, down in that little cul-de-sac down there is just off kind of to the north and east of that.
Yeah, in the grass in there.
Yeah, in the grass, so.
Answer your questions, Steve?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Here we go, all in favor, second if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
What was the same? Motion carried. Thank you. Item number ten, street and park report.
I don't have any legislative updates or anything. Simple, simple stuff here. Um last week or so, contractors have been moving north, so that has kept us busy. Um you remember when we tried to put the fire line in, who was, were upstairs, fires present, it took us quite a while. So we've been working on, on getting some valves and, and there uh, actually, you will notice here the next uh well, today was one and tomorrow, and then we'll get, then we will put notices out that some will temporarily lose water pressure or water, they would just do to them trying to get valves in so that we don't have to shut down the whole area at one time, you know, within the comments. But of course, now, I mean, this all happened in the south when they were moving, you know, working down there, and now we're just moving to the north where we're not certain how our valves work or sometimes if they even do. Um lot, with even lots of locating, we have, uh we had two different contractors in town. And we've been doing locate after locate. It's been, it's been just crazy. I think today I had ten of them coming with different drawings that they're doing, they're moving power lines, it will be gas line, all in preparation for the project right now, so. Um we are preparing for the parade route and things this, this weekend, Saturday. We're planning on handing out notices to the residents along the parade route, which leads to elementary school, goes to Fifth Avenue up to Second, down to Third Avenue, and then up to Third Street and back to Fifth Avenue and back to the school. So what I'd like to do is just give them a heads up that, you know, please don't park on the street during, during this parade. They, we have option, I can park just outside, just so, so the residents and everybody can enjoy, enjoy a parade without having cars in, in the way, so. Um parks, there two were perfect for Pelican best. We have the turkey barbecue in one, the car show in the other. So it's not just getting one park ready, it's getting them all ready at the same time, which is perfectly fine. Uh I'm sure you've seen in the paper already, but we did have a fire in our park. Um somebody had started the porta-potties that were up there on fire that were on the uh west side. Um did some damage to the women's shower house there, so we have that closed. Um I'm working with Serpro and our insurance to, to get a cost and uh estimate to get that fixed. And they'll uh, they work with smoke and stuff like that. But right now, we only have the men's side open, and so we turned it into kind of a unisex, put a lock on it. So we're still able to run, but it's uh, it'll be a little while before we, we hit the bathhouse back up and go on full screen, so. Uh I think that's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions for Brian? If not, is there a motion to accept the street and park proposal? Second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Here we go, all in favor, second if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
What was the same?
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Item number eleven, appoint the election.
Yeah. It's an election year, so I have a list of judges that I would like to appoint um for the primary election. Um and so I will read off all their names and then I would ask for a motion to appoint them. Um Catherine Andrews, Danielle Hartoon, Joyce Burnham, Stephen Dennis, Andrew Broderick, Don Lysacker, Kimberly Pierce, Steve Frendine, James Hoff, Dave Ellison, and Amy Schlesky.
I'll move to approve those names for election judges. Motion, the second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing that, all in favor, second if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anything else, Daniel?
No.
Thank you. Item number twelve, reinstated sergeant position within the police department. We have Chief Todd Williams here, and there was a job description. Thanks, Mayor, Council. Um when I started in January, based on conversation with staff, um council members, one of the things that we identified, that I identified as as something that we would work towards is the reinstatement of some of the the positions that we used to have within the department. Um one of those is sergeant, potentially I'd like to look at investigator position as well. Um Lance and I looked at some job descriptions, made sure that it was relevant to what we wanted the position to look like. Um we think it's an opportunity to assist with leadership, supervision, uh make it more efficient within the department um and potentially assist with with retention. So um looking for the council to approve, make a motion to approve the reinstatement of the photograph or of the position. Um after that, we'll post it internally. My plan is to, to fill that position with, with an officer within the department. We'll post it, we'll, we'll see who's interested, and obviously we'll come back after that process and get, get the council's permission to hire or promote whoever that would be.
I'll make a motion for sure.
Sorry. Motion, the second, discussion, discussion.
How long do you think it'll take to get this filled? Any ideas or?
Um it's not a surprise that officers in the department, I mean, we're, I think it's been pretty clear. We're pretty open about our conversations on different topics, and they're all aware that we were moving in this direction. Um that, that we were, apologize, um that we were making sure the, the job description was what we wanted. So they're aware of it. They should know if they're interested. I'm having talked to Lance, but I don't believe we'll have to post it internally that, that long. They'll decide if they want to do it, and we can do interviews, and it should be a quick process. I, to be honest, I would, I would hope that, that we're able to come back here by this time next month, you know, um and, and.
You know, um, and, and have somebody in that role. And I hope.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the same?
We got it, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Item number, uh, thirteen, library report, which is in your packet, that there's some FYI, and there's something to say about it. We'll move on to item number fourteen, administrator report.
Alright, since the last meeting, I worked with the clerk and mayor to set the council agenda, up for the council meeting, attended a pool construction update meeting. Uh, attended a donuts and discussion meeting hosted by Minnesota National Bank. Tended the Highway fifty-nine one-way construction meetings and open houses, uh, continued to work with the PFA to finalize funding for the. Highway fifty-nine one-way project, met with Mayor Frazier and Greg Stain to. And completed a draft of the PFAS management plan. Uh, worked with City Attorney Forzgrin and Apex Engineering on the utility easement with Pelican Valley Senior Living for the deck drain pipe at the pool. Uh, Jordan and I attended an open house with the Latino Economic Development Center at the library, attended the library board meeting. Uh, met with Annie and started looking into some of the issues brought up at the library board meeting. And then Brian and I met with the Pelican Valley Health Center officials about their upcoming construction project and look at. Some possible solutions to their lack of parking. Questions?
Fifteen, a mayor report, just a few items from the last couple of weeks, uh, January, excuse me, June twenty-sixth and also August. Third, attended, uh. Complete street staff meeting and also public meeting at the library, uh, August third. Excuse me, what did I say? It's an August third, okay, July, oh, no, July third, okay, I just missed it. Uh, twenty-sixth of June, attended the PFAS management plan meeting here with Administrator Royce and then. Greg Staying of People's Service, an interview with KFGO Radio at E.L. Peterson Park on Friday. Uh, June twenty-eighth, when they were in town promoting Pelican Rapids, I entered a parade there hard. Fourth of July parade, and also yesterday I met with Administrator Royce to plan the agenda for this evening's meeting. Any other question? Any question?
This PFAS plan, what's in there?
That was a requirement by the Minnesota Department of Health, part of this whole monitoring, you know, with the state has been, has already done two rounds, they're gonna do two more rounds here in the third and fourth quarter. Um, it kind of just. A lot of it was trying to get some source identification on where the PFAS is coming from, some planning on. What we're gonna be doing for, uh, testing and things like that, so. We kind of tried to keep it pretty vague on, so we don't get nailed down that we have to test here, here, here. We put in there that, you know. Um, so the leachate is getting tested every six months, we put that in the plan, um, but Greg kind of. Steered us towards staying fairly vague right now, so we don't nail ourselves into a corner on having to do specific things quite yet. But we're. We'll be working with like the turkey plant and things to try and nail down exactly where, where PFAS is coming from, but.
First, second, these four rounds, they're basically to set up baseline now.
Yeah, it's the first two.
Zero in on where it came from.
Well, that's kind of part of the plan now.
So far, we haven't shown anything.
Well, there's a little bit, I mean, like in the leachate, there is some, um, and in, so in the testing that the state has done. We're considered, so there's, there was three categories and we're in the middle category, it's not, you know, there was, I can't remember how many, there was. Um, so in the high category, there was probably less than ten. In the low category, I think there was less than ten, and then that, in that middle category, there was the majority, and that's where we sit. So there's special requirements on what we have to do, being part of that middle category. Of course, it's more stringent for the people in the high and less stringent for the people in the low category, but so right now, we're kind of in the middle of the road. I'd say we're in the lower middle of that road, as far as what they found in ours, so.
But now there's people on some baby waves.
Yep.
Yeah, it's, it's everywhere.
Any other questions? Uh, seeing no more items, agendas, or motion to adjourn, second, again, motion, second, all in favor, say, have to say aye. Uh, both the same.